We'd like to welcome everyone to the DeSoto Planning Commission meeting tonight, April 24th. Rule call.
Alan Brandt?
Here.
Mike Person?
Here.
Schultz?
Here.
Garrett?
Here.
And Commissioners Swollen, Blain, and Chairman Hemphill are absent as of this time, sir. And are you going to make your own?
Yeah, I just wanted to announce, in case you didn't hear, we are video streaming the meeting tonight. I think we'll be doing that from now on. So the way it works is just this webcam up here, and there's some microphones on the ceiling. So it gets kind of a fuzzy picture of you guys, but the sound is picked up pretty well, even conversations in the audience, so be mindful of that as we go through the meeting. And if any other commissioners come in, I'll make sure they're aware of that. It's something we've done with the council for years, and the council has asked that we start doing that planning commission. So we'll do it. It's live streaming now. If somebody happens to be watching now, it's live. And then there's an archive of it that'll be available when we get it up on the website sometime in the next few days.
Okay. Under General business, approval of a planning commission agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion to approve the agenda. Do you have a second?
Second.
Hold the favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Approval minutes of the planning commission meeting held on March 27, 2018.
May I have a stroke?
Second. We have a motion and second. Hold the favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Disclosure of conflict of interest. Disclosure of outside communications regarding commission business. Item number four, call the public. Members of the public who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda, they do so at this time. The presentation is for the information purposes only. No action will be taken. There is a four-minute time limit. Do we have anybody that'd like to come up and speak? Public hearing. Consider rezoning request for residents on Historic to Uptown Overlay District at Ottawa and 84th Street. Staff, would you like to give us a?
I think Mr. Weisberg will introduce this.
I'll take you through this. Chairman? Good evening. Thank you, everyone. City of DeSoto Planning Department received a application for rezoning a 4.4-acre tract at the corner of 84th Street and Ottawa Street. This request is being made by Joe Roy of All In Enterprises. Currently, the tract is vacant. It is zone RH Residential Historic. The applicant would like to change that zoning to UDO, Uptown DeSoto Overlay District. This is something actually that Mike worked on quite a while ago. It's not been used, or very sparingly been used. I think we've had an application before, but it actually never went through the full process, so this will be a first time it's really been brought to the governing body of the planning commission and ultimately the city council for a decision. The application was dated in March 27th. Proof of ownership has been received. Joe Roy is the owner of the subject property. In your packet, we did show an outline of the property that is to be rezoned. It is between, it's on the corner of 84th and Ottawa Street, but it also fronts Peoria Street as well. Tract is vacant and has been so for quite some time. One thing about the existing zoning, the RH District, it calls for moderate density residential with single and two-family homes, and the lots, as you know, are a little bit smaller in that area. The Uptown Overlay District is consistent with that type of zoning, but that's what the RH is about. It's that area, the oldest zone, the old planted area of town, which this area does fall into. The existing uses around this property, as I mentioned, are RH. There are a few other areas, the Faith Builders International Church is Zone C1. The school district facility there is actually PD, it's planned development. There also is some commercial zoning on Lexington Avenue. The applicant would like to change this to the Uptown Overlay District. As I mentioned, this is our second application, but the first one that's actually made it through this far into the process. Couple things about the UDO. Its purpose is to enhance opportunities for commercial development in the older section of DeSoto through application of overlay regulations. It also is to encourage innovative mixed-use environment that reflects the planning and development patterns of a compact urban pedestrian-oriented neighborhood through the use of flexible design standards. It's also to capture the general concept and vision of a traditional urban neighborhood without being so prescriptive as to inhibit or discourage design flexibility. Quickly go through the goals. First goal is to increase density through infill and redevelopment. It should be a predominantly pedestrian scale. It should be an incorporation of civic and public spaces and amenities. Connected street work and sidewalk headwork, and also designs that preserve, enhance, or complement the existing built environment. One thing I also wanted to mention about the Uptown Overlay District, this is an area that actually is triangular in shape. It goes from Ottawa Street to 83rd, through 83rd Downtown to the East Y, and then back to Lexington and Ottawa Street. So that's basically where it is. There's some areas, extended areas down by Miller Park in that area, but that's where the Uptown Overlay District exists. We go through the zoning compatibility factors. The first item on this is the character of the neighborhood, including but not limited to zoning consisting and approved land use, plating density, residential, natural features and open space. As I said earlier, the surrounding area is primarily single-family residence, residential. There is a multifamily structure also on Ottawa Street. The, once again, residential uses are the primary characteristic in that area. The change to UDO will be a benefit to the area as it will allow for new construction in an area that hasn't seen new construction in quite some time. Compatibility of the proposed zoning and uses permitted therein within with the zoning and uses of nearby properties. Proposed zoning is in line with the surrounding zoning and land use. Suitability of the uses to which the property has been restricted under its existing zoning. The existing zoning doesn't really inhibit the property from being used at all. However, the RH has a minimum lot size of 7,500 square feet, which is greater than the UDO of 5,000. The maximum coverage area for RH is 30%, which is more restrictive than the 50% under the UDO. And the side yard setback is slightly more restricted than the UDO. In the UDO, you can have a five-foot side yard setback. In RH, it's seven feet. You need to include that in your packet. That's the difference. So it's two feet on the side yard setback. Once again, these things are all, in some ways, most of the lots actually are, would meet the 7,500 square feet. There are a few that are just slightly underneath. Once again, all these little bits, little bits, little bits sort of add up, and so that's why the applicant has requested a change. One of the reasons they've requested from RH to the UDO. Like the time, the property has remained vacant, has zoned, which is basically, from the time disclosed, been formed as a incorporated city. The extent which there is a need in the community for use is allowed in the proposed zoning. One thing as far as the strategic plan, it's been recently adopted by the city council is to spur additional retail, commercial development. For that end, we need additional rooftops, we need additional population growth, and actually infilling in the older parts of town utilizes existing infrastructure that's already there, so it's not like we're having to expand, or there's more to maintain. And we're already maintaining Ottawa Street, Peoria Street, so the addition of these items won't create any kind of burden upon city staff to maintain what's already there. Additional items as far as utilities and infrastructure, access to electricity is already on site. Public service accommodations included, police, fire, parks, and schools will see little change from previous conditions. Also recently added concerns about broadband accessibility will be met with the service provided by Spectrum. Parking, which is something that's always been a strong area that we've looked at in the RH District when we've had items for redevelopment. Our code requires three spaces per dwelling unit for residential. Each home in the proposed Uptown Overlay District will have a two-car garage and two stacking spaces behind the garage. And some of them, they're actually deep enough, you might be able to get a couple more back there. Also along the alley that runs through the middle of the developments, you can see. That's one thing also about this, what I'd like to point out. This is actually a dedicated alley. It is not a public street. I mean, it's a public alley, but it's not a street in the sense like Ottawa, Peoria, 84th Street, or often many streets that we have through the subdivision. There are additional pull-off parking spaces for residents or people that will be visiting the property. The houses actually will be facing Ottawa Street and Peoria Street, so the fronts are still outward in their orientation. So the alley is in the back of the houses all the way through. The property here, just for your information, will remain C2 as sold. So even though the applicant does own that piece of property, he's not requesting that it changes. It will remain C2. Environmental impacts that the proposed zoning would create, don't see any kind of potential impact. We've had some, I did have a lady come in this afternoon and ask about flooding. There were potential impacts to Kill Creek by adding impervious, pardon me, impervious area to this area. But this drainage area is small, and the impacts to Kill Creek will be minor, so I don't see any particular environmental impacts to this development on this site. Economic impact to the community. Currently, the property, as I mentioned, is underutilized. It's been vacant. Construction or development that increases value of the property is an economic benefit to DeSoto in terms of tax revenue. We'll also have hookups to our sanitary sewer plant, which will, sewer fees will be paid. Also water fees will be being paid as well, so those are benefits to the city. The extent that the zoning amendment may detrimentally affect nearby property, considering that their residential uses surrounding the proposed UDO, and there's new construction going on, the, you know, there's benefit to this. Property values could potentially increase. More activity, new construction is always a benefit. Relative gain to the public health, safety, or welfare from a denial of the rezoning application as compared to the hardship imposed upon the rezoning applicant from such denial. There'd be little to gain really at this point. As I mentioned, there are some small differences between the RH and the Uptown Overlay District. However, as I mentioned, they do kind of add up, and that's why the applicant is going this direction. So really, its best use is either the UDO district or residential historic, so there really isn't going to be much benefit, if any, for denying the application. And finally, I'll do a couple more things. Consistency with our comprehensive plan. As you know, we are updating the comprehensive plan. However, it is still a document that we look at and evaluate all rezoning applications towards. This is actually still within our current, which is now 10 years old, comprehensive plan, does fit within that structure of that document. It also fits with the recently completed strategic plan adopted by the council. Finally, our recommendation of staff that the applicant has met the criteria for the Uptown Overlay District. This includes submitting a certified site plan, architectural color palette, sample building elevations, and a typical lot layout and landscape, which has all been included in your packet. Also at this time, just would like to point out, we do have a little bit of a sample of the stonework that will be on the front of the buildings themselves. Turn this for a little bit, let the audience see that. So it's right here. Advocate has submitted to me some colored palettes and some information that I can go ahead and pass out to planning commissioners. Should be enough for everybody to grab one. So with that analysis and our staff report, we are recommending that the planning commission approve the Uptown Overlay District and forward a affirmative recommendation to the city council. And with that, I will stand for any questions. Oh, and also, the applicant is here tonight, so if you have any questions for him, that will be.
So this road going through there, that's, is that going to be a city-maintained alley?
Yes, we will maintain that. We'll push snow and things like that, exactly.
Correct. So why, just calling us, you stood up the alley?
Well, because the alley actually is a little bit narrower, and we don't have to put curbs and gutters and things like that. And the drainage actually, the inlets are actually in the middle of the alley. They kind of drains down, so an alley's, I mean, it's a little bit, allows for a little bit denser development, a little bit tighter. So that's part of what the Uptown Overlay District allows us for things like that as well.
The drainage would still be good, though, in a heavy rain and things like that? It's not going to flood out other people?
No, at all. And actually, the applicant's engineer, Gary, you're here tonight, if you want to talk about some of the drainage calculations that you went through.
Going now?
Sure, if you'd like to answer that.
Good evening. My name's Gary Speedhar. I'm a licensed professional engineer state of Kansas. What I looked at, first of all, was the effect on Kill Creek. And based on FEMA's calculations, Kill Creek handles about 32,000 acres, right about at that location. We have a covert that goes under Lexington existing that's right, right here, off to the east of our property, between our property and Peoria. And our area, the total drainage area above this covert, I've estimated to be 17.3 acres. Our development is 4.1 acres. This is the shaded area here, is 4.1 acres. Basically, the 17.33 acres is about 0.05% of the drainage area to Kill Creek, so negligible if any impact on Kill Creek itself. If you look at the 4.4 acres of development, it's 0.014%, so less than 0.02%. So again, negligible with respect to Kill Creek. I did analyze the covert under Lexington, right here, slightly. We would have an increase in depth there. The current depth, I've estimated existing would be, let me find my, current depth existing would be about 8.7 feet. It increases about two feet to 10.8, but that's still five feet below a garage that sits right here, and seven feet below the, I'm sorry, yes, eight feet below the residence that sits there at that corner. So we didn't see any terrible impact with developing that out. That's pretty much what I researched to date on it. Any questions?
No, I was just concerned, when you said it wasn't going to have the same drainage as a street, I thought, well, I don't want people to have the same.
We will have pipes. We are planning, there are two inlets, excuse me, step away from the microphone. There are two inlets currently here on Ottawa that drain, that the pipe discharges onto the property. We will pick that up with probably a connection structure, run it down the lot lines, pick up an inlet in the alley, and head it down here, and the creek starts right there. We can release it into the creek there. We also are planning on having another inlet over on this side. There's a small low point behind this multifamily home, and that inlet is intended to pick that up, and then we'll have another inlet there, just turn the corner to get it up on the north side of the property we do not own here. So there is a small stormwater system there, but it is limited, but it will function per the standard design, city design, so. Anything else?
What size cube is going underneath Lexington?
36 inch right now.
Concrete?
Yeah, that's how I based my calculations on that.
Thanks, Gary.
This property here to the east, where these homes are all going to face, is that going to be turned into grass, trees?
Well, the applicant has got some clearing. That's actually city-owned property. Actually, Peoria, when it was originally planted, was straight through. City owns that now and will remain owner of that property.
You guys have anything else?
Has the fire department had a chance to look at this?
No.
Will they look at it?
Yes.
One thing I also wanted to mention, the house on the corner, which is showing up as Lot 1, will remain, is being remodeled or refurbished right now. I also, the applicant is aware that it will have to meet the same design standards that the other homes meet, so there will be some stonework and the colors of that house, landscaping will be consistent with the other homes in the development.
Do you have any other questions for staff?
Can you take something out?
This time, we'd like to open this up, open it up to the public. If you have a comment, please come forward. State your name, address.
My name's Joe Roy. 17123 158th Street, Baser, Kansas 66007. Kind of my idea on this thing was, is that I've had my eye on this ground for 10 years, probably, you know, and I'm thinking, well, what would that be good use for? And my whole idea with the alleyway and all that is to kind of keep the old style, the old downtown alley system in there. And I'm going to, all the houses will be built to look like it's an older home, but it's all going to be brand-new. So I'm trying to keep the front porches on all of them. I'm trying to do, part of them will have detached garages like they did back, you know, when you come off the alley, you come into a detached garage in the back. The ones facing Peoria Street is a little more difficult because of the drainage ditch there, so those will probably be attached to the house, and you would come into the back through the alley, into the garage, into the main floor. And then you'd have a big deck out front there, and then it'd be kind of a two-story in the front of the house with a big deck, and your bedrooms, I'd have, all the houses will have three bedrooms, two and a half bath. They will have, like I said, stone and all that. I'm trying to build a quality house that maybe a first-time homebuyer can buy, or something that fits into the neighborhood, you know? I don't think a $350,000 or $400,000 home in this area is the right thing to do, you know? So I'm trying to make it fit into the neighborhood, smaller homes, affordable homes. When I say affordable, you know, I'm hoping I can be between 250 to 275 is what I'm hoping. And, but that's going to be a very nice home. And I'm all, I have been back and forth, back and forth, selling the lots to builders, and I've kind of come to the conclusion that maybe I'm not going to do that. I think I am going to build them all myself. I have a gentleman that is retired builder that is going to help me, because I don't have time. I have a whole bunch of other stuff that I do for a living, but I will have control over the whole project to where I can be sure that they are being built to my standards. I'm kind of a picky guy, so they're going to look nice, they're going to, they're going to fit in the neighborhood really nice, in my opinion. But I wanted to keep the alley system in there just because of the old, because it's in the old part of town, you know? So I wanted to try to fit it all in there together. And like I said, it's, I'm real passionate about affordable housing, you know? I'm just real, I could do a lot of other things with this piece of ground and probably make a whole lot more money, but sometimes it's not all about the money. It's about fitting into the neighborhood. I have a big vested interest in this town with the other things that I own here, and I really want DeSoto to succeed. And with what Don Parr's doing with his new stuff, with what this is, the grocery store, you know, that's going to benefit that, it's going to benefit all the businesses. You're going to be able to walk from these homes uptown to the bank, the post office, be able to walk down to JT's, that strip center there. So pedestrian-friendly, I believe that this will be. And I, I just, that's my vision, is to keep it looking like the old part of town. And that's my, that's what my thoughts are, and thank you for your time.
Do we have anybody else that would like to?
Yeah, I'm William Cottle. I own the property at 33205 West 84th. My question is, has any consideration been taken into account for the aging sewer system that runs through there that all this seems to be going to run into? According to the plans that I read, all the sewers are going to run into that old main that's been there for years. Is that going to be affected, the extra drainage into that? And what's the effect going to be on the water, the extra water usage coming from the city from that? Is that going to cost extra cost on our part or? If my sewer drains into that, you know, I don't want to be backing up all the time with extra stuff going in there from all these properties.
Grant, can you answer that?
Yeah, I mean, we've got capacity in both the sewer and to handle the additional flows from this development, and also our water treatment capability will certainly absorb this quite easily. So there's, in our professional opinion, there's going to be no impacts to our infrastructure network.
Yeah, I think. Even as old as that sewer is, I mean, that sewer's been there since before I was alive. And that sewer's over 50 years old.
Yeah. On the sewer, I think it's about two-thirds of the lots drain toward Lexington. They're putting a new sewer line in from the line that runs along Lexington.
According to that, it says it drains into that sewer, though. The one they're going to put along Lexington is supposed to drain into, according to the paper I got, it was supposed to drain into that main.
Okay, so about two-thirds of the lots are, will go into a new sewer main.
Right. As it was said, it was supposed to flow into that main, according to what I read on here.
I'm not, I'm not sure what you read, but yeah, Gary, could you kind of point out what, I'm not sure which main you're talking about.
We have, we have two sewers that we're connecting into. We have an existing sewer that runs across the north side of the property right here. We will be connecting five lots to that, and then we have a new sewer that we are running down the alley all the way to tie into the main on Lexington. So 15 of the lots drain this way.
I understood, it was all running to one sewer direction.
That's why I wanted to clarify, because I could see what you were thinking. But we are connecting five homes to this existing sewer here, these five here, right there. But then the rest of them pick up in this sewer line that runs down and connects to the larger main down along Lexington.
But the old city sewer system's going to be able to handle all that extra?
In my understanding, yes.
Yeah, there's no problem with capacity there. I'm not saying it's not old, and we'll need some maintenance over time, it certainly will, but from a capacity standpoint, we're good.
What size, what size water main is going to be servicing these?
Gary, do we have a six-inch, the water main?
I'm not sure what we have on the water mains. I'd have to.
Well, we're not constructing a new one, though.
Not, not, no.
So all the houses will be tapped off existing mains that run along Ottawa and Peoria. I'm pretty sure the one along Ottawa is a six-inch. I'm not. I'm pretty sure the one along Ottawa is a six-inch, I'm not hundred percent, I think the one along Peoria might be a four, four or a six, one or the other. Which are, which are, you know, they're both looped in the old network of the old, you know, of the downtown, but they have, they have good network connectivity, I guess you'd say, they're looped on both ends. We've got good pressure throughout the downtown region. Again, they are older and could, might, could need some maintenance here and there, and certainly will in the future, but the addition of these, of these lots will not materially impact the hydraulic functioning of that network at all.
Is that gonna come with the city's expense, or is the developer gonna?
Well, the developer will obviously have to do the taps. If there's taps to be done, the developer's responsible for doing those taps and setting the meters, all that associated with the, with the new construction. And then he'll pay, he'll pay fees for every one of those meters, won't you?
Yes, I would.
Promise? I don't want to, but I probably will.
Now, when the water mains have broken in the past few years-
Excuse me, if you're gonna speak, I need you to come here, please. We're making video, so you'll need to state your name and address. Thank you.
John Davis, eighty-four fifty-five Peoria Street. And the water mains, when they did break in the recent years, when they had to get in there, I know we had to replace a lot of pipes in our home because over the years the corrosion had limited the intake to probably one-third of the original pipe diameter. So, is it going to be anywhere close to what it's-
Well, that's, that's always a concern with older water mains, and some of them are worse than others. So, like inside your house, might, it might be copper, might be a different material. We haven't seen larger, in this area of town, we haven't seen the large reduction in, in the scaling on the inside of the pipe, really just haven't seen that much in this area. But, you know, I couldn't swear that it doesn't exist.
Now, I know it did in our home, but originally, but another concern of mine is just the overall density of the thing, and kind of just did a quick thing online as far as the rainfall and considering it's two-point-two acres in reference, as far as fifty percent of the coverage would be where it would runoff, and for just an hour of two-inch rainfall would create a hundred-and-eight, or over a hundred-and-eight thousand gallons of water. And a lot of water towers, city water towers, don't even hold that much water, you know? I'm sure ours does, just because we're a little bit larger, but DeSoto, Missouri, I kind of looked at it and-
Are you talking about rainwater, or are you talking about-
Rainwater runoff.
Okay.
And, you know, Kaufman Stadium, not that long ago, couple of years ago, what, seven inches of rain within an hour?
Nothing can handle that.
And nothing can handle it, but, you know, even two inches of rain and a hundred-and-eight thousand gallons of water, that's a substantial amount. Whether to be decreased by a couple of lots, just to kind of give it a little more green space. And I know about, anywhere from eighteen to twenty inches down is clay soil, so there's not a whole lot of absorption within the soil that's already there. And I don't know if you can kind of tell where they've already taken off some of the trees, they've already hit some of the clay soil. So, just a couple of things would probably make a difference as far as decreasing it. And parking is always a concern. Nobody would want to park along Ottawa Street just because the speed of traffic sometimes, and it is kind of limited between certain points as far as no parking. And as far as people aren't gonna wanna park behind somebody else's house if they're going to be visiting them on the backside through the alley, even though there is one parking spot per two houses type of thing. So, you know, if somebody has three people over, they're gonna kind of run into a situation like, okay, where do we park? So, those are just my concerns.
There's not gonna be any parking on Ottawa for this development, is there?
Right, right now, John, I mean, there's no parking from Eighty-Fifth Street to Lexington on Ottawa, but potentially, I mean, it is possible somebody would park there, but we're trying to discourage that, that's why the developers added, you know, these interior spots, and plus there's additional, as I mentioned, some stacking room behind the, in addition to the two spaces behind the garages. So, it's kind of one of those things they're gonna have to train their friends and figure, you know, not park on Ottawa Street, even though it certainly is legal to park on Ottawa and Peoria, except for the section south of Eighty-Fifth. But that, that's sort of one thing we did talk about with the app, gonna allow us making sure there was adequate parking behind the houses to-
Yeah, I'd say on-street parking is the nature of the traditional neighborhood design. I mean, that's, your visitors parked out front, you parked in, you know, and back in your driveway. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't completely agree that no one would want to park on Ottawa, or that no one will. I mean, no one does, but it's because it's open, you know, there's nothing there adjacent to it right now. But it is legal, and Ottawa is wider, and I know the traffic volumes are up and the speeds are higher. It is a wider street than, than most downtown.
Do we, anybody else that'd like to come on up, state your name and address?
Sure, I will. Boots Linden, eighty-four eighty-five Peoria. I had lived in my house for sixty-five years. I don't move around much, and I've always wondered what was going to happen to what we call the hollow or the pasture. And when Joe told me what he had planned, I was delighted, and I know there's some little things that have to be worked out, but of course I wanted to know what was gonna happen to the hollow, right across from me, where the trees and the rock fence. And I was delighted that also that they're going to rehab the old Siegmund House. That land, in case you didn't know, was deeded over to John Possum in eighteen fifty-eight by President John Pope. He's the first person on my abstract. So, anything that can happen historical-wise, I, I think is good for the town, and I'm happy that it's going to be developed. Like I said, I know there's little things like sewers and water to be worked out, but it will be a great addition.
My name's Pam Oswald. I live at eighty-three fifty Peoria Street. And I know Joe, and I know he's a good guy, and he'll do his best to make sure everything looks good. My concerns, I have a few list, listed here, and one of them is the sewage, because right at my house, in the center of the street, there's a main, and when it rains really heavy, everyone's sewer runs into my basement from the city. So, I have to call the city, and they have to get somebody out to clean it. So, I don't know how that will affect, 'cause it's the old sewer system, it's a big main there. So, it hasn't rained for several days, but I just don't want more coming into my basement, and nothing's been done about it. So, that's one of my concerns. Another one is Joe said he wanted it to be affordable, first-time homebuyer. To me, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand is not a first-time homebuyer. I mean, to be fair, it's, I mean, like Sharon's house, I think hers is only worth ninety thousand.
You can't build anything in today's market. By the time you have a lot that you have to pay to put sewer in and all that, okay? You're gonna have forty thousand dollars in a lot when it's all said and done, okay? The average price today, times are good again, okay? So, that means all the prices are up again, okay? You cannot build, the norm used to be you could build a house for a, for a hundred dollars a square foot. That used to be the norm probably eight to ten years ago. Today's market is a hundred-and-fifty dollars for a nice home, okay? A square foot, not including the lot. So, I don't think that there is anywhere that, you know, affordable. I agree with you, but I agree-
I mean, kids get, they make fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, even if they're married and they make thirty dollars an hour, that's still-
I understand that, Pam, but the, but the costs are still there. I mean, I can't, I don't know where I would, you know, I don't know what, what, I don't know what, you're not, you couldn't build a garage anymore for ninety thousand, hardly, you know? I mean, it is, I've done the numbers. That's what it costs for per square foot to build a home today, and I know that it's sound high.
You better have a better investment and have something built nicely in behind your near you rather than have something put up.
And I do, and, and I know Joe will, I know, 'cause I know, I've known Joe for a long time. So, I know that he's not gonna do it the wrong way.
We also have a minimum of a thousand square foot for a home. That thousand foot times a hundred-and-fifty is a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars minimum just for the house.
Just for the house. And I understand that. I understand that. So, as long as it's not rental property, you're selling these homes. Have you ever thought about senior housing? Because we have no senior housing except for the little ones out north, or it's east of town.
I have, I thought about it a lot. But, you know, I felt that in this particular location, I thought that the, the house, the older-style bungalow kind of, it's not really a bung, but along those lines would fit better into this neighborhood. And I said before, I could do something else there like that, and I could make a lot more money. But you know what? I'm passionate about keeping this piece of property the same as what's in the neighborhood with the alleys and stuff like that. I am, you know, I, that's what my goal is. That's what I feel like I'm, I'm supposed to do. That's what my, that's what my vision is, and I, you know? Can I do a lot of other things? This, this zoning, I could do a lot of different things, but this chamber would be packed.
And I understand that.
Okay.
Now, how would that affect, like, our property taxes? Because once you build something, two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand, mine went up-
It raises our property values.
It went up twenty-nine percent last year, and then it went up again this year, not by as much, but it went up again this year. So, once you build those, it's gonna go up again, and we're gonna have to get second and third jobs just to pay our taxes.
Well, you know, I understand that, but at the same time, you know, it's gonna increase the value of your home, I believe, okay? And if there was a way that I could build these houses and I could sell them for two-hundred, that's what I would do. But in today's market, I can't do that.
Yeah, I, these are just concerns I have. And then the alley you said that's gonna be behind the houses, and those are gonna be city-maintained? Will they maintain our alley? Because our alley's not maintained. I have to go back and mow it every year because nothing's, it's like weeds back there, so. 'Cause it wouldn't connect into the alley over behind the church? Is that where you're coming off of Eighty-Fourth Street to, it's not running north and south?
No, it's not, it's, it's only has two entrances off of Ottawa Street.
So, it's coming off of Ottawa?
Yeah, just these two.
Comes off Ottawa, bends it right, goes back to Ottawa.
Here's Ottawa here, and just, that's it there.
Oh, okay, and ours is right there.
Right.
That was concerns.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else?
Yeah, one more, real quick. My name's Lawrence Davis, also eighty-four fifty-five Peoria. And when this all first started, I was planning on coming up here and raising, holy heck, telling Joe who's doing it. That gave me a lot more confidence. I know if Joe says what he's gonna do, he's gonna, he's gonna do it. And then when I heard he was gonna keep that, I was gonna go, I'm gonna go to the environment, like the historic part of this, I won't, he's gonna keep that. So, I really see no problem. I would like to see maybe one or two less plots, and I wanted to know how, kind of how high they are gonna be. Are they gonna be able to see my front window?
On your side of the road there, like I said, the vision would be that you would come into the garage, and you'd go out into the living room and the master bedroom and all that, and then out where you're at, you would have a deck out there. So, I guess in the wintertime, they're gonna be able to see your house.
Okay. And, and are you gonna make it any more accessible from, for them to get from Peoria to the apartment, to the houses?
Yes, there's gonna be a sidewalk that runs from, basically across the street from where my, that barn is.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a sidewalk that'll go back in behind the piece that the city owns.
Yeah.
And there'll be a sidewalk that runs down in front of all those houses. And that will connect all the way down to the A-plex, it'll come up, and then it will shoot to Lexington. That way, you can walk down in front of, when it's all finished, you'll be able to walk down in front of all those houses, walk back up, and walk down to JT's.
But as far as up, well, I'll say, up where we are, whether there will be no sidewalks?
They'll be back against the houses that are gonna be built. So, there won't be any sidewalks along the side of, across the street from your house.
Yeah, okay.
Will not be any there, but it will be back on the backside of that ravine.
Okay. So, I won't be able to hit golf balls down there anymore?
Well, you probably could, the neighbor guy might get mad.
Might get mad, okay, thank you.
You can do whatever you want.
Do we have anybody else that would like to make a comment? This time we'll close the public hearing. Comments from the commissioners?
I feel comfortable knowing Joe's doing it. I always put a dedication to DeSoto, and he would do everything he could to make sure that the property is something good for the community.
Kind of like on the little drawings that he gave here with, what the houses are gonna look similar to in standards of the houses that are around, they're actually figured out, the average lot size is gonna be eighty-one hundred-and-twenty-four square foot, which is, other than a couple of them that were smaller, would have been what the zoning was required anyway, so. I think it's gonna be a good deal for the city.
I think it's gonna be fine, knowing who's doing it, how it's being done, everything else, I think it'll be a nice addition.
Hello?
I'm the outsider, but it sounds like a good situation for me, too. I mean, I live south of town, you know, quite a ways, so I won't probably be buying a house in there, but it sounds like a good, kind of, good plan, with everything going on.
No more questions? So, we're gonna take a motion?
Make a motion that we approve the rezoning on Bigport and Ottawa from RH Residential to UDO Uptown Over Bay District.
Commissioner, we don't actually, in the planning commission, make that, so you do a recommendation to the council. I'll second that. It's okay, we got it.
Do we have a recommendation in the second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Alan Brand?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
McPherson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Garrett?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion carried.
Okay, under old business, update on the comprehensive plan?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This month hasn't been a particularly public month for information on the comprehensive plan. There's been a lot of, as in your packet, your staff report shows on the bulletin, there's a lot of mapping updates, tabulating, getting GIS information, things like that. Have been in constant contact, or at least, you know, probably every couple, three days, have questions for our consultant about the development of the plan, and they've also been getting information from the county, tabulating information from the Census Bureau on DeSoto. I did want to point out on May eighth, we will be having a public meeting for- for citizens of DeSoto to attend to residents. It'll be May eighth at three P.M. There'll also be an evening session at seven P.M. here in the council chambers. And then also on May ninth, we will have a follow-up committee meeting. Now, the committee is myself, Mike Brungardt, City Administrator, Richard Hemphill, Chairman of the Planning Commission, and also Mayor Walker. So that's kinda your brief update, Mike, if you've got anything to add, that'd be terrific. But I know you've been doing a lot of the GIS work and the shape files and all that type of information.
No, I'd like you to think I'm doing a lot, actually. No, I think you've got it covered pretty well, Brad, thanks.
Yeah, for any questions?
Do you have any questions, Ryan? Okay.
All right, thank you.
New business we have done. Calendar, May the third is the council meeting at seven. Seventeenth is the council meeting at seven, and May twenty-second, it's the regular Planning Commission meeting.
Lana and I will not be here for the next meeting.
You will not?
Will not be here.
So do you have any comments that you'd like to bring to the force? Johnny? Hello?
Hi.
Lana?
I would just like to remind the Planning Commissioners, as well as all of you in the audience, that tomorrow evening, the doors open at five o'clock in the Community Center Gym. We are having KC TV Five Weather Team here to do their program. And they will start at six o'clock, I believe, and it goes until seven. It's free, and we would love to have as many citizens in DeSoto as possible to pack that gymnasium. So Brett Akhigie and the entire weather team will be here for that. Come on over and join me, I'll be here. Thank you, commissioners.
Anything else? You have to take a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Hold, favor say aye?
Aye.
I want to thank everybody for showing up tonight.
Thank you, guys. Nice to have you, listeners, occasionally.